Call this meeting to order, all rights for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one change to the agenda. Six E will be moved up first when we get the action. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, both second.
No favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Open forum. Just checking if anybody wanted to speak from the audience. All right. Prove the minutes, approval of bills of purchase order, approval of investments, ambulance department bad debt, fire department bad debt, police officer step increase. There's a resolution number 2021 dash 26 from the Melrose Lions. Here, $1,000 towards the Chamber of Commerce for the Deuces Wild sponsorship. Then resolution number two is 2021 dash 27, a donation of $200 towards the Melrose Fire Department, also from the Lions. There's a street maintenance worker step increase, Pearson Brothers invoice 2021, Seal Coat Project, and then there's gambling resolution 2021 dash 31 for the Missouri Chamber of Commerce. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Round the reports, TriCap Bus Service. Feel free to come on up to the podium. Thank you for being here.
Thank you inviting me here tonight. My name's Craig Remp. I'm the Director of Transportation Services for TriCap. I have been with TriCap now, I believe it's nine weeks, so I'm fairly new there. I've been in transit as a director for over 12 years, so I'm not new to public transit, but to the TriCap agency I am. Just a quick overview, our executive officer asked me to do a little sales pitch for TriCap. It's a cap agency and we do a lot of service for individuals that are in need, whether it's financial situation, housing situations, nowhere to live, weatherizing homes, food, different, all types of programs. There's a lot of individual programs in each of those areas. And then I'm in charge of the public transportation system for the five county area here. And TriCap has the grants through the state of Minnesota, MINDOT, to provide that services. The service we have in Melrose, we have one city bus here and it runs from, I gotta check my notes, I don't know all the details yet, so 7:30 to 3:45 on the weekdays, five days a week. That bus stays within the city limits here and services the city itself. We also have three other buses out of SOC Center that run around and they come in and out of here regularly during the day, excuse me, and during the week, sometimes one day a week, it depends. We also offer service from here to St. Cloud and I believe that one is... Uh, let's see, to St. Cloud. That was, that one's on Thursday, so we pick up here at 8:20 and return at 3:45, so that's based as a shopping trip for anyone that wants to go to the St. Cloud area shopping. On Tuesdays, Melrose passengers can take a bus from here to Albany for the services. There's a bus that runs back and forth on Thursdays for that. And two of the buses out of SOC, they pick up passengers here and take them to the Wacosa up in SOC Center and that's every day of the week, morning and afternoon runs. Oh, what else? The six to six, oh, in SOC Center, it's a six to six service and they run a 10-mile radius up there of the town for passengers. So the whole system here is the one main bus, but there's a lot of connecting buses and we're always looking for new service with that, other to little communities or other town just connecting, however it works. We probably will not be looking at that seriously until this fall. We're just coming out of all the pandemic and all that and the shutdowns and realigning things and we're learning that the needs have changed. So we're gonna be looking seriously this fall of where there's more needs or where there's less needs and redesigning and realigning things. Public transit, I've been in the rural section for eight, nine years of those 12 and three years I was with the city of Mankato running the city system there. The rural systems I've learned, this community, this area is no different. There's a great need for it, but the problem is the efficiency and to get the funding. It's hard to justify some of the needs when there's only one or two passengers every hour. So that's a battle we fight all the time. We're always looking for new, new funding sources, partners to help, and every chance we get, we beat up on MINDOT for more money, so. We are looking to grow in this area to provide more service for the community. A couple other details. Tokens, we do sell tokens for passengers so they don't have to carry cash and at, in Melrose here, Colburn sells them and the, at City Hall, they sell them for passengers. Ride counts. I did some charts here I could hand off here in a minute. So passenger count for just the city bus here alone, back in January of 2020, we were doing just shy of 1,000 rides a month. Then in April of 2020, we did probably less than 50. It dropped that much. And then it's been coming back up consistently, but now in '21, February, March, April, we're up over, from about 430 up to 500 passengers those months, kind of back and forth. Summer always drops off a little bit. June, we were down to just shy of 300. School's starting up, things will pick up again. We don't have July's all tallied up yet. So the nice thing is we're on a steady incline, that up and down every month always happens. But it looks like not just here, but all of our routes, we have 18 routes that we operate, they're all following the same pattern. So the, the needs are coming back, the ridership's coming back and the people are starting to move around again, which is good. I, being new, I wish I had a lot more details and sales pitch to push on this. I don't, I guess at this point I will open it up for any questions.
Been part of this for a long time with TriCap. It's a great organization. It's good to have it in our community for people that aren't able to drive or, you know, it's good to, you know, you have handicap buses to help getting people in and out. It's a wonderful thing to have for our community and I appreciate it very much.
And Lori Schultz has been with TriCap eight, eight or nine years now. She's been heavily involved with transit during that time. She said that the partnership with Melrose, the city was really one of our best. It's a really good partnership, so she was appreciative of that. And we appreciate all the support. Our funding from the state, our operating grant is typically 85% of our costs, our budget, I should rephrase that. We turn in a budget and they decide what our budget should be, which is never the amount we turn in. And then they give us 85% of that budget, so, and the rest is for us to figure out how to get it funded. A large portion is through the fares, the passengers pay, and then the rest of it basically is for partners like the city, whatever they can give us to help support the transit system and keep it running.
All right, well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Police Department Monthly Report, Chief Mouse.
Good evening. Our July 2021 numbers in our traffic area, we had 24 citations, 108 verbal warnings one morning. In 2021, we had Tran 37 calls and requests for service. Last year was 278. We ended on ICR 2,024 and last year was 2,046. We do have some increases over last year. I did a quick look in 2019. We're a bit under 2019 numbers, but they're holding pretty consistent with 2019, which I, I believe is a better benchmark than using 2020 for any of our increases or decreases and what's going on with the department. 21 agency assists, so those are down a little bit more than normal. Usually closer mid to upper twenties, which is just fine. A couple areas to note, school will be starting on August 30th for everybody in the Melrose School District anyway. Please watch for buses, crosswalks, kids biking, those sorts of things, especially those first few weeks when everybody's getting back and getting used to seeing those again on the road. Within our department, Alyssa Ingrifer received an honorable mention related to the DWI All-Stars, which is a program put on by the state to recognize DWI enforcement. You have to hit a certain number in order to receive a trip to the Twins game and be recognized, those sorts of things. She was under that number by three and I can't remember what the number was, if it's 30 a year, 20 a year, whatever it is, but she missed it just by a bit. So she did get a hat and a pin for recognition, for recognition for honorable mention from the state, but 75% of her DWIs were in the drug area, which is changed from what we've been used to see in Ferrari area anyway. Part of that, I think, is related to some of the special training she had gotten to. She recognizes, she can see what that is a little bit better than maybe the rest of us can, as well as, it's an area she likes to focus on is traffic enforcement, so it's good to see that. Some benefits of drug-related vehicles is we usually get to keep them or at least take them away for a period of time till they go through court, as well as anything that's associated or could be affiliated with the crime of drugs. So if there's money involved, we get to confiscate that too. And then once it goes through the courts, we may or may not be able to keep it. So there's some backend benefits for the police department as well. Unfortunately with all that though, we have, I think, 18 vehicles sitting in our impound right now that haven't gotten to go anywhere because court's been backed up. So that's good and full out there and I don't know how many of them will become home secretaries because they've been out there for so long or what story is, but we do the best we can with them out there. It's just good to see that even at state level it's being recognized for what she's been doing as well as the rest of our officers, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. City Attorney Report, Scott.
Yeah, as I mentioned in my report, we did get a decision finally on the Bonner matter. The, Mr. Bonner had filed motions with the court asserting that the city of Melrose had acted arbitrarily and capriciously in issuing its abatement order and denying, and in denying him the permits that he had submitted after we had issued our order. So he was, he was asking the court to, you know, dismiss our abatement order and issue a directive to the city of Melrose to give him his permits. We argued this, I got checking, early May. And we, we got the decision beginning of this month, about two weeks ago, and the judge denied both of those motions. The judge in her order did say that she would be scheduling a further hearing on a federal preemption issue, which I went back and read through Bonner's motion papers and I don't see any reference in the papers, so I'm not quite sure what the judge is looking at. The idea of a federal preemption is that, you know, normally the federal government adopts laws and regulations, states can, states, counties, cities can adopt regulations regarding the same subject and, you know, so long as the laws don't conflict, there isn't a problem. Occasionally, at the federal level or at the state level, they will say, we're adopting these rules and nobody else gets to. That's what they mean by preemption, you know, that, you know, these other, other regulatory schemes by states, counties, cities, you don't get to regulate in this area, it's strictly federal. Again, I, I just don't see that that was raised and I went back and read through the motion papers. So I, I can't tell you what the judge's issue is. I can say that the federal government adopted rules where in effect they have a, a building code for manufactured homes that's then uniform across the country. There are some areas in that building, federal building code, where they specifically are saying, these are the rules, states, you're preempted. But there are other areas that the states are allowed to regulate. And if you look at the Minnesota State Building Code, in the section regulating manufactured homes, I mean, they, they adopt the federal rules and then they've kind of filled in in some of these areas where the federal government left them that authority. How our ordinance on nuisances would be preempted with that, I, I'm not sure, again, what, what the judge is trying to get concerning that. Like I said, before the meeting, after talking with city administrator, we, we hadn't heard anything on a hearing date, other than just that the court was gonna schedule one for like two weeks. So I called the scheduling clerk and asked about it. Then I got an answer, like Chief Mouse just said, well, the courts are backed up. You're, you're, you're on the list. Looks like it'll be, earliest would be October 8th. So it continues. Again, this would be a hearing where there, essentially these hearings we've had have been based on motions by Bonner to not actually have the, the hearing where the judge would give us authority to, you know, remove the trailer. And so this would be another hearing and another opinion, which, you know, assuming we prevail, then we'd finally get to the actual trial on the merits of removing the trailer. So more, so yeah, coming up on a year, we're still winding our way through the courts. I wish I had other news.
Yep.
And that, that's all I've got in my report. If counsel has any questions or issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Good evening. We have the second quarter financial report as of June 30th. The Rev, uh, General Fund had total revenues of $646,600 and expenses of $1,262,208. So as a percentage of the budget, the revenue is a little low. A good portion of our taxes are received some in July and the rest in December, as well as our state aid, and those make up a large portion of our budget. Another area that was low on revenues was our liquor license fees. Those were budgeted previously, but the council had decided to waive those fees due to the pandemics for the bars and restaurants. Other services are administrative fees and maintenance from Stearns County comes towards year end. One area across all funds you'll see came in very low was our interest income with the market value adjustments that took a large hit this year. We received revenues from building inspectors, but the, or from building permits, but the fees to the inspector are paid in July, so you'll see that expense was lower than average. Our engineering fees were slightly higher due to some costs for the Fifth Street flooding issues and expenses for industrial and community development department are very low. We only had that position built for two years, or two months of the year so far. MADA fund did not have a lot of activity as of this point. Our ambulance fund was right on track. The revenue is at 57% of budget and expenses were at 52%. The administrative transfers to the general fund are done at year end. One item to note, the school and travel expenses were coming in higher due to EMT and PLS refresher courses taken. The uncollectible accounts were also higher. There were some old claims that were written off. The fire department, the revenues were at 17%. A lot of that funding comes in from the townships and the city at year end. Expenses were at 49%. There was some larger costs, the purchase of radios, also there was some legal fees for grant writing that were purchased. Special revenue funds, this would include, we have a business improvement loan fund, senior activity center, the TriCap bus discussed previously, and the yellow bike program. There wasn't really much activity the first half of the year in those. Our capital project funds, we do the first half of the transfers into that. We do that in June and December, so that was a large portion of the revenues. A lot of the expenses had not occurred yet during the second quarter. We see those more in third and fourth, primarily third. And we continue to watch the cash flow for those projects to make sure that is funded well. We've started engineering work on the 2021 street projects at that point and the street department also will be purchasing a new plow truck. For the debt service fund, that's funded through property taxes. As I said, a lot of that will be coming later. However, all of the debt service payments had been made. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. City Engineer Report, Nick from WSB. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Update on some projects here. The Chip Seal Project was completed on August 4th. Pollo Works did review the work. Work turned out really nice. We did recommend final payment on the consent agenda in the amount of $6,1,498 for that work. 2021 Street Improvement Project, contractor has completed the storm sewer work and the curb and gutter work. Things have been a little slow on their part, but we've talked to them and motivated them to work a little faster. So they're gonna be working on the reclaim work tomorrow. So a couple of weeks, we should be done. Get the first layer of paving done on August 25th and then the final layer scheduled for September 1st at this point. So a couple more weeks, we'll be wrapping that project up. 2020 Street Improvement Project, the punch list has been completed. They've completed some areas of concrete work that needed to be replaced, so that work is done. We can bring that forward to council for final payment at the next meeting. And last but not least, the RDB project, we have completed 90% plans and we do have a 90% cost estimate associated with that. We're looking at 5.8 million for a total project cost at this point. I will say that there was a typo in my staff report. It said 6.3, so sorry about that. Should've been 5.8, so in case you're wondering where that number came from. Plans will be submitted to MINDOT, stated for approval here at the end of the month. Bridge plans have been submitted to MINDOT, resubmitted to MINDOT, I should say, addressing some comments they had. Cohmore application comments have received. We're working on getting that resubmitted. DNR dam permit was submitted on August 2nd and we're on track to hopefully bid the project out in October, November, pending obviously funding. With that, any happening, answer, any questions you may have?
I think one thing, one thing that came up with the, the weekly media or monthly media we had was the traffic routes and something like that and the notifications to the, you know, especially the school, when we do finally get acknowledgement that the four projects going forward, can you touch on the timing of when we will be communicating traffic plans and stuff?
Sure. I mean, I think the first step would be to get the funding, bid the project out, get bids, approve a construction contract, and then at that point we can do some, some more robust outreach to the community. I think we wanna wait till we, till we know we're moving forward this year before we wanna engage anybody, but as soon as we get, you know, bids and, and hopefully bids come in low and we can award a project, we can, we can certainly start the public engagement process after that.
And it should be at least a month ahead of time, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a little bit, there should be plenty of time once we get bids and, and award it to, to notify everybody.
Nice, Nick.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. City Administrator Report, Clay.
I don't have a lot. I have some things to address on the agenda itself later on. The one thing, and I showed all of it. Uh, the one thing, and I showed all of you that picture, and five hundred and fifty, or fifty-five trucks, cement trucks, poured concrete yesterday at the wastewater plant, so they're moving along on that project very nicely. And obviously, I think everything else is on track. So we'll get into some of the other economic development related items later on the agenda.
Okay. We are on the action items. We are moving up six E, which is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine, a resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the voluntary statewide volunteer firefighter retirement plan. Due to a conflict of interest between council member Hill and I, we will be turning this over to acting mayor Tony Clausen.
Uh, Tom, you want to give a little summary of the findings for this year?
Sure, sure. Appreciate you guys bumping this up in, in the council packet to get everything moving. So, um, as you've received in your packets, um, it's that time of the year to do the, uh, annual benefit for the fire department relief package. And in the package, you should have the, uh, the twenty twenty-one recap and, and the schedule of, of increases. A couple of things I'd like to mention, and we can definitely open it up for a conversation. One, recap how, how the count is funded. The count is funded three ways. First is the two percent state fire insurance money goes into there. Looking at the packet, we had a little bit of a thirteen, about fourteen hundred dollar increase from what it was last year. So when buildings go up in town and the, the community continues to grow, obviously, they need to have their fire insurance. So, um, that continues to increase every year. Eighty-two hundred dollars is put in from the fire budget into this fund from, uh, from the city on their behalf. And then the third way is through the interest or the gains from the, uh, how well the funds are done. So those are the three ways that the fund increases. And as you see, well, we got the year-end, uh, review, we are at about a hundred and twenty-four percent funded. That's a four percent increase from last year. When we enrolled in this program several years ago, uh, the council's comfort was somewhere around the hundred, six hundred and seven percent funded. And we've, um, always wanted to honor that, that, that request. So this year, we're getting us to that level. We are asking for an increase to thirty-two hundred dollars, and that would put the funding rate at about a hundred and nine percent. It's two or three percent higher than what, um, what your comfort level is at. We all know the last two years have been some up and downs in the market and, and there has done very well with it. And, uh, we're very pleased with the, the decision we made. The, right now, the fund shows two extra people on the, uh, on the account to, to tune about six thousand dollars that are on a leave. I don't anticipate them coming back. Uh, February will be their one-year leave, and after that, if they don't make it five years, the funds get put back into the, uh, the pool and then they get mixed up or dispersed amongst the other ones. So there are two, uh, guys on leave right now that I, like I said, I don't anticipate them, them coming back. With regards to retirement, um, nobody said anything about retiring. Uh, we potentially could have one next year, but other than that, we have twenty-six guys on right now. Three new ones just a couple of months ago you guys approved to, to bring on. And, and so we, we continue to actively look for new guys. This piece right here is a nice recruitment retention piece that, that, um, I'd like to, uh, to continue and, and get, get what we can get from it. So, um, one of the questions you guys have asked in the past is, is how do, how do we compare to neighboring communities with regards to the retirement piece to it? It's really tough to compare apples to apples when they're not on the same program, pair of programs we are on there. They have their own, um, either self-funded, uh, or they're just out on their own. So it's, it's very tough to compare it. There is one community close, Osakis, um, volume just like us, size just like us. They're at four thousand dollars a year for, for retirement. When I look at the, the neighboring, uh, communities and try to figure out, okay, is it, is it a good, good thing for us? And I, I say, yeah, and I always ask them, what, uh, how do you guys, how's your pay structure work? And so like when they are on a training program, they get paid hour for hour that they're at training. We pay our guys one hour, whether it's a three-hour training session, four-hour training session, they get paid one hour. Calls, we, we have a, what we call standby call. So if you, on a medical, if we don't, you don't make the truck, show up down at the hall, at least you should get some type of a credit. So we give them half, half of what our hourly pay is, which is ten dollars and twenty-five cents, so they get half of that, five something. The neighboring communities will pay anybody that shows up down at the hall. So, um, cost benefit to that to me is, is our payroll isn't as high as some of the other ones. So shifting some of that money into our retirement makes, makes it a plus for me, I, the way I look at it, so. I guess I just look for you guys' vote to, to increase it to the thirty-two hundred, which puts us at a hundred and nine percent funded for the, for the year. Questions?
Um, the only, the only question I have is what happens if, say, you have a firefighter who spent ten years in one department? Comes to Melrose, spends ten years here. Does he vest, is he like instantly vested? But, you know, does, does that ten years come out of, not all twenty years comes out of ours. Ten years comes out of the prior?
Yep.
Department, whatever.
Correct. One hundred percent correct. So we only pay for whatever portion he is on here.
Right.
And then, of course, you have to make it five years before you're even invested in this program at all. So if you don't make it the first five years, um, like I said earlier, the funds go back into the pool. And then it's a percentage of, you're up to, to twenty percent is a hundred percent funded. And I guess, uh, I'd also like to add one piece that, uh, just so you guys are aware of that, you can always increase, but you never can decrease. So that, that, um, we're, we're conscious of that, and I think that's why we want that hundred and six, hundred and seven percent funded. Because what are the chances of all twenty-six guys leaving the department at one time and, and draining it down? Probably, probably is never going to happen, but I just.
The only risk you run into really, in my, this is my, my view, is if we have a big market correction, you know, and the fund gets hit pretty hard, and then you have two retirements, you pull out the big lump sum when it's at the bottom. Now you have less that gets to grow back up. And that's why we want to maintain a hundred and nine percent or over a hundred percent during the really good times. Because during a massive market correction, which we can't predict, obviously, it's happened a couple of times in the last twenty years or whatever, but, um, you know, then it kind of evens out along.
And, and, um, good point, and, and just know that we're one of, uh, I don't even remember how many fire departments are on this program. So the pool of money is, I believe, last, I saw was a little over a hundred million dollars. So you got some big guys watching this pool of money because it, it, uh.
Yeah. Well, there's definitely some intelligent money managers that are.
Right, exactly. And I, I feel that's why it's done as well as it had versus being on your own where you're only eight hundred, five hundred.
And actually, back in twenty eighteen, I think we had like a, I think a ten or twelve foot, two hundred, ten or twelve foot, um, percent, ten or twelve percent market correction. So then I, I pinged Perrin, I asked him, can you run the numbers quick? And we're still over a hundred percent funded. And we had just reset it to, I think it was like a hundred and six percent, came up to or down, down to the benefit level. So that increased my, my confidence substantially that, you know, the hundred and nine percent should be able to weather the market corrections. You know, give or take, so.
Great.
My comfort level is fine with, you know, going up to the thirty-two hundred level, so.
Any other questions?
I'm good. Do you feel this is, I mean, it, the retirement part is helping, but do you feel that you should, like, do you want to change at all with the, hourly and stuff like that, or you, does everybody on the department see the retirement's more worth it than?
Everybody has, has said, let's put the money towards the retirement. It's, um, a little bit of a, a benefit. But yeah, it, put the money towards the retirement if there's going to be anything.
Okay.
Clay?
So, uh, any other discussion? You had a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the thirty-two hundred.
Second. I'll approve, second by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and a motion carried.
And two abstains.
Two abstains.
Okay. And also want to thank the chief. He puts in a lot of hard work, um, checking all this stuff through year after year after year. So he does a very good job for our department. Thank you, Tom. All right. Ordinance, uh, it's eight nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending section ninety-three point one-nine of the city code nuisance parking and storage. Scott, are you going to need to talk about that at all?
This is, this is the proposed amendment we discussed at the June meeting, and the language hasn't changed. I mean, it's just been placed into ordinance form, so yeah, this is, this is what we discussed. It was a more of a timing issue, uh, last, last month. So we didn't get it, get it posted, uh, in a timely fashion, which I think was okay. It allowed us a chance to discuss it with the council and get your response. So this is the final product. What we're doing is going into a little bit more detail and adding language to our nuisance ordinance, specifically addressing junk and abandoned vehicles, which are becoming more of an issue. And so this will give us, I think, better, better tools for addressing those problems.
Can I get a motion to amend the, uh, this ordinance?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And six B, these are just for the variance, uh, for extension for the Tom property, uh, Tom Henon property at four one four Second Street Northwest.
So the planning and zoning commission at its regular August ninth meeting had discussed a request of Tom Henon to get an extension on their variance. They wish to build an eight, eightplex. But because of material pricing and other things, they feel that now is not the time. Their variance is expected, or I'm sorry, is set to expire, excuse me, in October of this year. So after some discussion, the Plan, Planning Commission, uh, because of material pricing, supplies, et cetera, is recommending to the council that the Tom Henon variance extension be granted through October first, twenty twenty-three, which gives them, so they're not going to have to come back again, we're hoping, you know, it gives them a couple of years. And, um, they feel that that is very reasonable and that they can work within that parameter. Now, Scott and I had talked about this. When the original variance was approved, they didn't have, they just had the original expiration. So this, I believe, is going to have to be an amendment to the existing variance, so just up my eye. And that's what it looks like. The map is up on the screen, just so you're aware of where that's located. They have an existing eightplex right next to it.
So you need a motion to amend the?
Yes.
Other one?
Yeah.
First one? Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, second. First and a second?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And we do have the same thing for a variance extension request at three oh six Second Street Southeast. Um, I did have one quick question on that, um, on.
Do we have to, do we have to make a motion or to approve the question this to twenty twenty-three though, right?
Yes.
It was amended though.
Well, you're amending it, so you're amending this area to extend that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
You can do it all within the one motion.
Okay.
And, and we're basically doing the same thing with this motion. I just wanted to just clarify one thing with the, the personal letter that was delivered, where it says, um, the variance given to build or bring in a manufactured home. It's still a stick home yet, right? Not like a modular home, like a trailer house can't be put on that wall.
So a mobile home by definition, in other words, a mobile home is something that is on, is on wheels. Like those can only go in our mobile home parks. Manufactured homes are, they could come in on a truck in four parts, if that makes sense? Or, you know, it's not the same thing as a mobile home.
Correct. And, and I'm just want to make sure that the citizen understands that.
Okay.
When, when he bought that. I, I just want to make sure that he.
I, I, I don't know what, uh, what Mr. Roman is, is contemplating.
No. He did understand that.
Talking, yeah, so.
Okay. So, so there is a understand, okay. I just wanted to make sure not that all of a sudden it tries to get put up and then we're dealing with another Bonner thing, you know, sitting there. So I just want to make sure it's clarified, but I was good with it otherwise, so.
Yeah, and they'd have to, you'd have to apply for a building permit to.
Correct.
Build or bring something, yeah, so we'd have an idea at that time.
It's not to say that people can't put in, they can't bring in what manufactured homes. They just have to have it on a permanent foundation.
Yeah, permanent foundation, yes.
That's different.
So, so basically, we're asking for the same thing with amending it. Um, can I get a?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's the first.
Second.
Second, first and second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Uh, County Highway thirteen and Fifth Avenue Northeast Project. Do you want to go through both of them?
Sure. So the first resolution is approving, uh, the county project within the municipal corporate limits.
Let me get that, sorry.
Okay, so yeah, WSB, excuse me, has prepared and presented to the city the plans for project zero seven three six one three zero two five, County State Aid Highway number thirteen and Fifth Avenue. It's the bridge project, the RDB project, within the city limits of Melrose as a state aid project. So what we are asking the council to do this evening is to adopt resolution twenty-one, two, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight, approving county project within municipal corporate limits. So that's the first action that needs to happen as a separate action item, and then I can talk about the second one.
Okay. All right, so first action, uh, the resolution, can I get a motion to approve the first part?
I'll make a motion.
I guess, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried.
So this, uh, the first resolution I should have clarified is something that has to go in when we apply for the state aid funding or the county applies for it. So that's why we had to do that resolution. We also have to do a similar resolution relating to parking restrictions on County State Aid Highway thirteen, Fifth Avenue Northeast, within the city limits. So basically, what we are saying is anything that is north of Main Street, there is no permanent parking allowed on that. So the bridge going out, out of town. So they don't, you don't allow parking on there now, and we're just saying that, we're acknowledging that that will continue. We think that there probably was an original resolution passed, but that was a very, very long time ago. So it was just easier for us to redo the resolution and submit it with the state aid application. So that's what this is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. First and a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Now we are on to six F, purchase of a truck body for a smoke blow.
Yep, so basically, um, this is just, just what it is. You guys actually had approved back in twenty twenty-one, the purchase of the twenty-two Mack chassis for, from Nuss Truck and Equipment. And now we're asking for the authorization to purchase the truck body for the chassis on an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand.
I didn't see, what was the expected delivery date? Didn't see that.
I didn't, I don't know.
No big deal. All right, I'm good with it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And Center Point Energy twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one easement.
So this is, um, again, related to RDB project. The Center Point Energy is requesting an exclusive twenty-foot easement to lay, construct, inspect, protect, operate, maintain, alter, abandon, replace, substitute, and remove the gas transmission or dis. or distribution pipelines or pipeline facilities and apparat, whatever, the other parts there too, in and under grantor's property in Melrose. So this is in the park. Problem that we had is, it was very difficult to go back to like the original deeds, so I said, you know what, just put a map together that shows where this is, and we'll be fine. So that's what we did. So here you go. That's where it's going.
So we don't, we don't have any issues with any other utilities there?
Um, no, this is to move the gas line, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
So it won't affect those water lines or those sewer lines in there?
No, the sewer and water lines aren't there, so it's proposed, it's right here, it's the dash line, it's a little hard to see, but that's where it's going.
And this, this doesn't limit only CenterPoint?
Yeah, it is, it's exclusive for CenterPoint, it's not related to any other utilities.
Yeah, but is CenterPoint the only one that will ever be allowed to use that?
Correct.
At 25?
That's my understanding, right? That's typically how they do that.
Is that really how they do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because the others are all in.
They're on the other side.
Or, well, or they're in the right of way. This is actually physically going to be inside our park, so.
Can I get a motion to grant an easement to CenterPoint?
Some more. Second.
Okay. First and a second, Hare say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, we're on to old business, resolution number 2021-30, resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, establish an American Recovery Plan Act.
At our June meeting, we approved resolution 2021-23, which authorized the staff to apply for these funds. At the time, we didn't know what they were going to be, so we couldn't identify that in our resolution. On July 27th, we received the first half of our funds, which totaled 193,433.52. The remaining half will be paid to us in 2022. So the city has until the end of 2024 to determine the eligible projects that we want to spend those funds on, and then we have until the end of '26 to actually spend those. So the attached resolution is to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. First and a second, Hare say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Then we're on to new business then, right?
Yeah, so as Craig discussed earlier, in 2011, the city entered into a contract for transportation services with TriCap. We currently purchase 20 hours of bus service per week from TriCap at $442 a month, so a little over 5,300 a year. In 2019, there were a total of 10,422 rides. In 2020, that dropped in half, and as of June of this year, they were about 3,185 rides. So those are used, as he said, for education, medical, shopping, et cetera. The city currently transfers $2,500 annually to this fund, however, because of the lack of contributions, it's been running a deficit. So staff is looking to consider entering into agreements with some of the primary benefiting parties of the ridership, some of the larger drop-off locations. So we would look at where the percentage of ridership is and reach out to those organizations and see if they'd be willing to enter into a cost share program with us.
Is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve to?
Some more.
Second.
First and a second, Hare say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thanks. All right, we are on the potential land acquisition.
So this is, at this point, where Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask, according to state statutes, that we close the regular meeting and we open up, or I'm sorry, that according to the open meeting law, we can close meetings about certain things, and one of them is land acquisition. Therefore, I am asking that you please make a motion to close the meeting at this time.
All right, it is 6:50. Can I get a motion to approve the closing of the meeting?
I'll make a motion to oppose.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Hare say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. So we just need everybody to step off for a little bit, camera to be turned off, go for a run around the building.